Good morning. I call to order the June 30, 2022 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. County Council Stephen Madcor, Clerk to the Board Tony Marneck. Commissioner Savis is attending a regional transportation meeting and will be late, but will be here later this morning. With that, roll call. Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed during this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Gary, can you please introduce the next item?
Yes, Chair Smith. We will begin with a public hearing under the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. First, Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. It appears she has not joined the Zoom yet, but Tony will let us know as soon as she does, please. All right. With that, this is a public hearing, Adoption of a Resolution: Adopting and Appropriating Funds for the 2022-2023 Fiscal Year Budget for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Total budget is $69,890,973, with appropriations totaling $69,890,973. Funding is through rental incomes, Metro bond funds, federal and state grants, and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved. Tony Carter is the interim director of the Clackamas County Housing Authority. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. The proposed Housing Authority budget goes into effect July 1 if approved. We had a budget hearing on May 23, and on May 26, the Board of County Commissioners approved to move forward to public hearing. The Housing Authority is a municipal corporation established under Oregon Revised Statutes 456 to provide low-cost housing to individuals meeting criteria established by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Housing Authority, under criteria of the Government Accounting Standards Board, GATSBY, is considered a component unit of Clackamas County, Oregon, because the Board of County Commissioners, with the addition of one resident commissioner, also governs the authority. While the Housing Authority is exempt from Oregon Local Budget Law per ORS 2294-316 and does not have an annual appropriated budget, the authority follows county protocols on budget preparation. The Housing Authority utilizes a budget as a transparent operations tool rather than a legally appropriated budget as defined by GATSBY. Approximately 50% of the budget relates to metro bonds and is used to increase affordable housing stock in the county. Forty-eight percent of the Housing Authority's revenues are federal funds through allocations from HUD, and they cover public housing, the capital fund grant, voucher administrative fees, voucher housing assistance payments for rental assistance, and grants for the Family Self-Sufficiency and Resident Services Program. Less than 2% of this budget relates to the Supportive Housing Services Rental Assistance Program at this time. The Housing Authority uses no county general funds. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the board or the public at this time.
Thank you, Tony. Does the board have any clarifying questions at this time? I will now open the public hearing and take in-person testimony first. Do we have anybody? Don't see that. Tony, do we have anybody online?
Madam Chair, do not have anyone registered for public comment. If there is anyone who would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature at this time.
I will now close. We don't see anybody. I will now close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Total budget is $69,890,973, with appropriations totaling $69,890,973.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved to adopt the Housing Authority budget. It has been seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Do we have any further discussion? Tony, has Anne Leenstra joined us?
Not yet, Madam Chair.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take the poll with the Commissioners who are present?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Gary, what's up next?
Next is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, let me just get it pulled up. And... The Housing Authority has three items. Item one, approval of an amendment extending the duration and funding of an agency services agreement with Mental Health Association of Oregon to provide peer support to residents of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Amendment value is $108,460.37 for 14 months. Agreement value is now $475,864.30 over five years. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment increasing the scope of work and funding of a personal services contract with Northwest Family Services for housing navigation and placement and supportive housing case management services. Amendment value is $489,065 for four months. Contract value is now $1,389,221 for one year. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a personal services contract with Do Good Multnomah for case management, peer support, and housing navigation services for Veterans Village Participants and assignment of the contract to Clackamas County. Contract not to exceed $1,685,321 for five years. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the Housing Authority Consent Agenda? Seeing none, any further discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Schrader has moved for the approval of the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Has Anne Leenstra joined us yet?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anne, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
I will now call for the poll.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Anne, thank you very much for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Gary, what's up?
This is a... First is a public hearing under the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. It is a public hearing for approval of a resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and imposing and categorizing a property tax for tax year 2022-2023. Total budget is $54,935,941, with appropriations totaling $40,513,939. Funding is through existing district funds, property taxes, ARPA funds, fees and fines, and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved. Mike Bork is the Director of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you is a board order and staff report for the adoption of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. The NCPRD Budget Committee met on May 23 to receive the budget message, hear public comment, and deliberate on the proposed budget. At that time, the Budget Committee approved the proposed budget in the amount of $54,935,941, with a tax rate of .5382 dollars per $1,000 of assessed value. As per Oregon Budget Law, the governing board may make revisions to the approved budget after the budget hearing up to $5,000 or 10% of the fund's expenditure budget. The board reviewed this request by staff on June 14, 2022, and agreed to the revisions of the budget as approved May 23, 2022. As per Oregon Budget Law, notice of this meeting and financial summary of the approved budget were published in the Clackamas Review on June 22, 2022. With that, I would like to respectfully recommend adoption of the NCPRD budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, take in-person testimony first. Do we see anybody in the room? We do not see anybody. Clerk, we will moderate the communication online.
If anyone would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and imposing and categorizing a property tax for tax year 2022-2023. Total budget is $54,935,941, with appropriations totaling $40,513,939.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved adopting the NCPRD budget and has been seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony, what's up next? I mean, Gary, what's up next?
It's okay. Next is... We're still the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. This is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes. North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District has three items. Item one, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Community College for provision of program instruction at district facilities. Amendment value is $39,900 for one year. Total agreement value is now $143,484 for three years. Funding is through district budgeted funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment increasing the compensation and extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Community College for access to district facilities for community-based programs. Amendment value is $15,068 for one year. Total agreement value is now $38,000... Or, I'm sorry. Yes, $38,330. Funding is through Clackamas Community College. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Clackamas County for provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents at the Milwaukee Community Center. Amendment value is $29,432. Grant value is increased to $453,624. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? Seeing none, any further discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for the approval of the NCPRD District Consent Agenda. Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and convene as the Water Environment Services Board. Gary.
Next is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services has four items. Item one, approval of a resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriations from contingency into special payments within the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Transferred appropriation value is $50,000. Funding is through service charges, interest, and other income sources. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a goods and services contract with TVW Incorporated for cleaning services at various Water Environment Services facilities. Contract value is $264,581.76 for three years. Funding is through Water Environment Services operating funds. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a construction contract with R.L. Reamer's Company for completion of the Kellogg Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility Aeration Basin Improvements Project. Contract value is $2,794,940. Funding is through Water Environment Services capital funds. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a public improvement contract with DN Tanks LLC for completion of the Kellogg Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility Secondary Clarifier Rehabilitation Project. Contract value is $1,797,000. Funding is through Water Environment Services capital funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off of this consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary.
Next is a public hearing. Approval of the Clackamas County Supplemental Budget Resolution for fiscal year 2021-2022. Fiscal impact is an increase in appropriations of $405,950. Funding is through beginning fund balance, federal and state grant, fees for services, inter-fund transfers, and other revenue. Sandra Montoya is the Budget Officer for Clackamas County. Sandra, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Sandra Montoya, Budget Manager. Before you today is the final supplemental budget request for fiscal year 21-22. It is being brought to you because it's a requirement of Oregon Budget Law that just says before we expend more than we have authority to expend, we have to bring the item before you and request permission to make the adjustments. So we have nine items, and they are a mix, and I can go through them if you would like. I do need to point out, we did have one change from the newspaper notice in the Clackamas County Review. It was for an additional $400,000 in the county's risk fund. So the staff report you have before you shows $750,000. What we presented to the newspaper said $350,000. And per Oregon Budget Law, we are required to point it out verbally and also in writing. So I do that with pleasure, and with that, I will pause for any questions you may have.
Do Commissioners have any questions or comments for this presentation? I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. We see none. Tony, is there anybody registered on Zoom?
Madam Chair, there is not anyone registered at this time. There is anyone who would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Clackamas County Supplemental Budget Resolution for fiscal year 2021-2022. Fiscal impact is an increase in appropriations of $405,950.
I'll take a second. Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved for the approval of the Clackamas County Supplemental Budget. Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Sure.
And welcome, Commissioner Savis.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Welcome, Commissioner Savis. You are in a very important meeting, and thank you for being here. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item one, approval of the June 23, 2022 business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Assessment and taxation, item one, approval of a personal services contract with the Masters Touch LLC for tax statement printing, mailing, and electronic delivery. Contract not to exceed $707,300 over five years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. County Council, item one, designation of newspaper for 2022 property tax foreclosure publication. Projected cost of publication is $1,812.38. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Item two, approval of an amendment modifying the benchmarks of the Clackamas County Courthouse Phase I Funding Agreement. Agreement value remains at approximately $95.7 million. Funding is through the Oregon Courthouse Capital Construction Improvement Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a board order revising the effective date of ordinance 9-2020 from July 1, 2022 to July 1, 2023. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. Finance, item one, approval of a parking space lease and addendum with Nicholas Varoski and George Diamond for 10 parking spaces for the district attorney's office. Lease value is $11,400 per year until terminated. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Human Resources, item one, approval of a personal services contract with Pacific West Claims Incorporated for liability claims administration services. Contract not to exceed $425,000 for five years. Funding is through risk management claims funds. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of an amendment increasing funding of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for operation of the Mountain Hood Express Bus Service. Amendment value is $222,000. Agreement value is now $858,999 for one year. Funding is through federal pass-through dollars. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District on behalf of its Milwaukee Community Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $29,432. Grant value is increased to $453,624. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an assignment of personal services contract with Do Good Multnomah for case management, peer support, and housing navigation services for Veterans Village Participants to Clackamas County from the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Assignment has no fiscal impact. Contract value remains at $1,685,300.21. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a board order adopting the solid waste management fee schedule as recommended by the Solid Waste Commission. Effective July 1, 2022. No fiscal impact. Funding is through ratepayers. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Sunrise Gateway Corridor Visioning Project. Grant value is $4 million. Funding is through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a public improvement contract with Granite Construction Company for the Sunnyside Road area paving project. Contract value is $5,566,566. Funding is through system development charges and House Bill 2017 funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Fisher has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda is limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of court consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon law statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. I do not see anybody in the room. Tony, do we have anybody online who would like to comment?
Madam Chair, at this time, there is not anyone registered. If there is anyone who would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's the next item?
Next is County Administrator update. I'd like to share good news of things our employees do here at Clackamas County. Today, I'd like to share two nice notes that came in about our staff. First, a note came in recognizing our county surveyor, Ray Griffin. The note said, "I want to take a minute to brag on Ray Griffin. Ray just recently helped a client of mine to solve a rather thorny property boundary issue, the gist of which was a boundary between two parties that was undefinable. There was a gap in the legal descriptions. I worked out a contract agreement that resolved the issue. One of the parties needed to talk to someone she could trust before she would accept this settlement. She said she wanted to talk to the county surveyor in person. Our surveyor, Ray, agreed, stepped up, and the result is the agreement has been... The result is the agreement has settled the issue because our employee, Ray, stepped in to help resolve this issue between two neighbors. So thank you, Ray, for the excellent service to our community." Next, a note came in about our transportation and development staff. I am writing to... The note said, "I am writing to express a great deal of thanks and appreciation for the work of a county employee. I wrote to the Board of Commissioners a month or two back regarding safety concerns with a county-owned property that adjoins my property off southeast Judd Road. Deanne Rome, a property resource agent in transportation and development, became my point of contact, and she showed great initiative to address the concerns. Deanne worked extremely hard over the last month or two to keep us appraised of any and all updates as to the progress of problem-solving efforts. I wanted to highlight the positive impact just one dedicated employee can have on the community." So I sent a note to Deanne to thank her, and she quickly deferred to her colleague, Paul Runyon, who also works in transportation and development, and said he helped her solve the problem, which, I mean, that's very humble of Deanne, of course, but she did it, and Paul. So thank you both, Deanne and Paul, for your excellent customer service. You know, Commissioners, you know this. We have 2,500 employees, and every day, they each provide outstanding service to the public, and you never hear about it, which is why I like to recognize these examples with you each week. That is my good news for this week. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. And before we proceed with Commissioner Communication, Commissioner Savis, you are at an important meeting this morning, and we have voted on some budget items. Would you like to go back and cast your vote on those, or are you okay as it is?
Be not part of the discussion. I just... I'll pass.
Okay. They were mainly items we had already approved in our budget meetings, and I will continue on with Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. Tuesday, I had a tour of the Water Environment Services facility with Greg Geist and I want to thank all the personnel of West for doing a great job. The facility was outstanding, well-maintained, clean and very functional. It's amazing what that facility does, what comes in and what goes out a few days later. Back into the Willamette River is clean and healthy. So thank you, everyone at West for the good work you're doing. I'd also like to thank the Oregon City Business Alliance, Ken Ziegler, Dan Fowler and the other directors for the Tuesday meeting we had on homelessness. OCBA is always doing good things and I appreciate that. On small lot woodlands, the Oregon Department of Forestry has bestowed the 2022 Oregon Tree Farmer of the Year Award to Steve and Wilda Caffarata of Estacada for outstanding forest stewardship resulting in a high volume of harvest production on a small forest lot. They did a selective harvest on a 20-acre parcel that produced 238,000 board feet of sawlogs and 258 tons of pulp. Well done, Steve and Wilda Caffarata from Estacada. Now, summertime, school's out. Meals for kids this summer. For those kids in Clackamas County who rely on free and reduced-cost lunches during the school year, now that summer is here, all our school districts in the county are continuing to serve free meals to kids. Contact your school district office to find out about pickup times and locations and you can also call 211 for information on meals for kids this summer. On the Fourth of July, enjoy the Fourth, but be careful with those fireworks. We've already hit one fire in Clackamas County up on Marmont Road. Burned about 20 acres. So although we hit a lot of rain, things dry out quickly. Be very careful. On this day in history, my favorite movie director, Alfred Hitchcock, opened his film Psycho. And it caused a phobia in the nation about getting in the shower. So ladies, be very careful when you get in the shower.
Oh, my gosh.
One of my favorite films.
I thought you were going to say The Birds.
No, that's another good one. And also, on a note of levity, we are 30 June today, halfway through the year and we have not had one disaster so far. Now, how about that? Is that good or what?
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood. And finally, I'd like to thank all the residents of Clackamas County for all you do and have a good and happy and safe Independence Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about a colleague of ours who passed away on June 1st at 80 years old and that is former state legislator Ralph Groner and he was also a county commissioner. I knew him for many, many years, both at the legislature, where he worked for the American Federation of State Municipal Employees. And I was always, always grateful to have him there, to see him there, to work with him. He was a wonderful human being. He did many things as a public servant. He was in the legislature in 1972 and he was the chairman of the House Committee on Aging and a member of the Committees on Education and Human Resources. And then, kind of similar to what happened to me, he came to the commission and he served on the board for eight years. And he also was a member of the Clackamas Community College, original board of directors. And one of the quotes that they had, that Ralph said, because he enjoyed his job, he enjoyed his work, he enjoyed people, again, a delightful person. We're really going to miss him. But he said, "I am one of these fortunate individuals who loves their work and see no reason to retire." Well, Godspeed, Ralph. You were a joy to us for many years and we will miss you and he will have his memorial service today at Clackamas Community College at 1:00 this afternoon. So it's a little moving, isn't it, to see people that you've worked with for years? You know, we're kind of getting into that demographic where we're having to say goodbye to them. And it certainly gives me a reason to reflect and pause and I will be there at the funeral this afternoon to give my best wishes to his family. Chris Groner is also a good friend and I have also worked with him for years. So in any case, thank you. Chair, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I share your thoughts, Commissioner Schrader, about Ralph Groner. He was a bright light in the Capitol for many, many years and I know he served this county well as county commissioner and has been a... Was a mentor of mine in this role for... And so, just so appreciated. So thank you for recognizing him and his service to this community. So, on another note, I keep getting congratulated from different people all around and I say, "Oh, congratulations." You know, for what? For the courthouse? For prevailing to a runoff in my race in November? For opening Tuck Willa Springs? For successfully housing 294 people who were previously chronically homeless? Which success are you congratulating, me or our commission? And it always seems to be a different answer. So I just want to say to my fellow commissioners is what we're doing is being recognized by people in the community. We have done some amazing work and we have great things on the horizon. Another housing development, Fuller Station, is going to be completed by the end of August or first part of September, which will be another celebration that we will have. And there's just... We're just moving ahead on some really great things and we're doing this as... With a team effort and an eye towards what the people of our community need and it feels really good to be part of a commission that is moving us forward in spite of so many barriers, obstacles and challenges. We continue to keep our eye on the prize and so I am very thankful for that. And I'm also... There's a lot that we do and I know that each commissioner does this and we don't often talk about it during commissioner communication, but we do a lot of interaction with our other elected officials and I want to just give a personal thank you to Sheriff Brandon Berg, who is always there at the other end of my cellphone when I text her with questions and concerns and what's going on and she is just always there collaborating and communicating and I just want to thank her for being part of our team, even though she's not at the dais with us and she's not presenting publicly to us except at budget time. She's just been a great ally in moving our public safety system forward with effectiveness, accountability and an eye towards keeping our community safe. So with that, those are my comments for today and I think we've almost had one of the shortest meetings ever today, Chair Smith.
Ah, it's... Could be that way. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I was... Kind of almost fascinating, Commissioner Fisher, your comments because I was going to... I guess I'm going to tee off of that even though what I wanted to talk about is very similar. You know, we do interact with a lot of elected officials and other folks and I remember well over 20 years ago, going to a city council meeting in Washington County and sitting there on a... It was a water issue at the time and I was so impressed with the chair, with the council, how they worked with each other, how they were very deliberative, how I just... It was like... It was to me, it was like inspiring to just see professionalism decorum and the cooperation amongst them and sharing the ideas. It was just fascinating. And it's really been a pretty significant impression upon me as well as my first, around that same period of time, my first visit to the legislature. And my first visit to the legislature with the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce. We did a tour and we sat in on a hearing and I remember two people in that room that particularly, it was State Senator Betsy Johnson up at the dais and Ralph Groner.
Yeah, yeah.
Testifying in front of Betsy Johnson on a particular issue. I can't remember what it was, but I will never forget both of their performances. And they were great. I mean, and I got the chance to then meet Ralph Groner afterwards and chat with him and I, of course, over the many years, interacted with him and another person who really presented himself well, was always seemed to be very professional, had a lot of energy, just a great person to talk to. I remember every time was a pleasure to talk with Ralph. He was just very inspiring. And I also appreciate, just thinking in his passing, I too will be there for a short time and we all... I have to head over to Portland, I think, for a Portland Business Alliance meeting afterwards. But the other point you wanted to raise, I was thinking of, Commissioner Fisher, was Fuller Station. I can't help but think of a recent loss of a friend, Anna Geller, who was the key driver of getting that building and housing erected along with other successful projects. And she had a heart for people and she was also, as a citizen and a business owner, very active. But overall, I was, you know, in the last, you know, week or so, I have been, and even this morning, working with a lot of elected officials, very inspired and felt very encouraged by people who recognize the challenges we have and our interactions together and how we all... How we're all respectful and our decorum and so forth when we're all working together. And I just... I always go back to that. I always strive with... To that and I have people that speak to me and encourage me to continue to remain calm and remain professional despite some of the challenges that we do face. So again, I just want to close with just great recognition for a number of people that have passed. I won't... Can't mention them all, of course, but the last couple, three years have been trying. We've lost a lot of good people.
Yeah, we have.
And I'll be at least grateful to recognize Ralph Groner this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Savas, on that. Just a quick update. Commissioners, you might be happy to note that yesterday is my duties on the tri-county planning body onboarding and training for the special housing dollars for Metro. The tri-chairs sit on that planning body and we met with a group who's going to go forward and work on dispersing funds and setting goals for that. It was very enlightening. It was an opportunity for self-reflection, writing down some personal items about ourselves and then sharing those with the groups so we all understand maybe why we're at this position in our lives and doing what we're doing. And it was a good growth opportunity, I felt, for me and probably hopefully everybody else as well. Yesterday afternoon, I attended Tammy Little's retirement from our county assessor. It was a very, very nice event, well-attended by many people and very fun stories were had. And Bronson Rueda, our new sworn-in county assessor who assumes those duties tomorrow, July 1st, was the emcee for that. It was a lot... It was a lot of fun and my hat is off to Tammy Little for securing her succession plan in her department for a very, very well-qualified individual. Of course, we know we attended the OCBA Homeless Front Forum this week. Also, Tuck Willa to... Tuck Willa Springs opening on Monday for a 48-unit housing facility for people 50 years and older who could be suffering homelessness, who are suffering homelessness. And wraparound services available. It was a very nice event, very good property that has had some bumps and hurdles and the Housing Authority overcame that and provided for a very nice facility. I too will be attending Ralph Groner's service and I first got to know him when I was in the legislature and he was a lobbyist for Ask Me. And he was just a joy to talk to. And even though we could have been on opposite sides of the fence based on our philosophical, political leanings, it was never apparent in our conversations. And I always know he was working for the greater good and so was I and I look forward to that service today as well. But I want to thank my commissioners for all your hard work this week. We did a lot of heavy lifting and we made important decisions that will have an impact on Clackamas County for many years and decades to come. Thank you, my hats off for your collaboration and good advice that you always give. Seeing no further business before this meeting, we are adjourned.